I'm going to introduce the candidates here that are running for the Lapeer Community School Board. I want to start out though by saying that we would have loved to have all the school districts here so that you can listen to them. However, it would have been, would have given us 19 candidates and with just, we just don't have the time and we don't have the room to handle that many numbers at this time. So what we decided was that because we couldn't do all the schools, what we'd do is the biggest. The Lapeer Community Schools enroll 50 to 60 percent of the total number of students in the county. So without further ado, let me introduce the candidates asking for your vote for the Lapeer Community Schools. First on my far right there is Brad Heggeston. Did I pronounce that right? Brad Heggedon, sorry very much. And next to her, next to him is Jan Peabody. And then Lisa Novak. Those are the three people, there were four actually. Another one was Dave Campbell and he chose not to attend tonight. So these are the three people we want to listen to. Let me tell you what the rules are first so before we get rolling too far here that we're going to follow them. To begin with, the audience will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the candidates. Any questions asked must be general to all the candidates and pertinent to the post they are pursuing. No personal or impersonate questions will be allowed because every candidate up here is going to be answering the same question, okay? That's the way we do it here. The audience, excuse me, each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement, 90 seconds to answer the question, and 30 seconds for a rebuttal if one candidate in particular is named by another candidate. And then one minute for closing statements. We will have a timekeeper. That's Diane, she's sitting here and we're going to let you know, or excuse me, Marge, somebody's going to be the timekeeper up here, okay? Rest assured. And so we'll be keeping track of these times. Candidates will rotate. They take turns first to answer questions. So first one we're going to have answered question would be Brad and then we'll go from there. And they'll all take turns being the first one. Due to the time constraints, all the questions from the audience may not get answered. I hope candidates will be able to stay after the meeting and maybe answer some questions that you may have thought of or may come up with that you want answers to that didn't get answered during the meeting time. So any questions on that right now from anybody? Okay, then without further ado, let me introduce Brad. Brad, just give him a hand please. Go ahead Brad.
My name is Brad Heggedon. I currently sit on the Lapeer School Board. I was appointed last November due to a resignation. I did run in 2014 for the school board and narrowly lost. I'm a 2014 Lapeer West graduate. Both of my parents graduated from Lapeer Schools in 1978. One graduated from Lapeer West, the other one graduated from Lapeer East. All my brothers attended Lapeer Schools. I live right here in Mayfield Township. I've lived here the last 20 years of my life. Proud Lapeerian, I guess if that's even a word. My three things and why I'm running. Number one, I feel it's very imperative that we have somebody that was a recent student on the school board that knows the ins and outs, that knows the ins and outs of the school district and remembers what it's like to be a student, especially in this ever-changing time of curriculums. I also feel we need to continue to get community involvement through dual enrollment and our homeschool partnership, CFI. We've got to keep doing that. And we've got to keep getting numbers. Obviously, it's no big secret, we're losing students with declining enrollment which is hurting us financially. And it's unfortunate that the state doesn't give us enough to survive and it's created a dog-eat-dog situation in this education climate of Michigan. It's really not fair to our students, but to survive, you've got to continue to offer more options and continue to do what's best for our students. And that's what my colleagues and I strive for every day when we donate our time back to this community so that they, so that we can give back and know that your children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, nieces and nephews get the best education possible from Lapeer Community Schools.
Good evening. My name is Jan Peabody and I'm here tonight as a candidate for Lapeer Community School Board. First, I want to thank the Lapeer Tea Party for putting on this event and offering us this opportunity. After much thought and consideration and being asked to run for Lapeer Community School Boards and chats with my husband and my family, I did decide to file to run for school board to serve my community. I was taught from a very early age to do what you can, where you can, when you can to serve your community. And I feel the school board, being a school board member, would offer that opportunity for me to give back. I've been a resident of the district for 17 years. My two children, Adrian graduated in 2008 and Henry in 2012, are proud alumni of Lapeer Community Schools. And they have told me that Lapeer Community Schools provided them with what they needed to go on in the future and their future choice was college. So I'm very proud that they are college graduates and financially independent of me, so very, very proud of them. But what I hope as a school board member is that all students of the district are prepared when they leave, whatever their choice may be. Whether it's college, whether they leave to raise a family, they go to a trade school, they become an entrepreneur. That would be in the back of my mind all the time. I was very involved in Lapeer Community Schools throughout my children's tenure in the school district. I was involved in PTA when Maple Grove Elementary School was open. And as they continued on with their academic and athletic careers, I sat in the bleachers a lot to support their academics. I chaperoned two trips to Washington DC, one in 2004, one in 2008, and it was an awesome experience. You get to know the kids and the families. Another project I was very involved in was Project Graduation. It's an all-night lock-in party for the seniors the night they graduate. The parents of that senior class worked very, very hard to raise funds to put on activities for the kids in the school. I chaired that event in 2012, 2011-12 when my son was a senior and in nine months we raised $22,000. So those kids had a wonderful evening. So I'm very proud of that. And while they were in high school, I was asked by Kelly Page, who was the principal at Lapeer East Community High School, to be on the parent advisory committee. So we would meet once a month with parents and the teachers and the administration. As a school board member, with every vote, I would take into consideration what's best for the student, the family, and the educational community. And at this time, I would ask for your vote and support on November 8th. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Novak and I'm running for school board. My children, I have four children that were involved in Lapeer Community Schools. I am a recent move-in actually, five years only being here, but I've seen the results of the great things that the school does. My background is in business. I currently am full-time faculty at Mott Community College. I teach accounting and business. I am very fortunate to have a current dual enrollment class of 33 students of Lapeer High School students and I love it. It's very enjoyable. It's a different kind of class for me because I'm used to college students and I have high school students, but it's a great experience and I'm enjoying every minute of it. I think it's important to have a current high school student, which I have, I have a ninth grader, actually she's at Zemmer, and I think that's important to have a parent on the school board. So part of my reason for running is I'm a parent, I'm also a community member, but I have the business skills. I worked in the school districts in administration doing accounting and doing special education financing for eight years. So I have a lot of skills to bring to the district and I think that's really important, especially in the times when budgets are tight. I understand everything that's going on with the legislature and the funding mechanism. And I think that's extremely important. I just went to a conference today over the weekend and went to a great conference on business principles in education. And we need to bring back some of that business ideas to education and I think that's where we'll survive better. We need to realize that our students, our stakeholders in our community are our customers. And if we can do that, maybe we can bring back our numbers and do a better job in education. I realize that I'm, like I said, a new person, not as seasoned as some of these, but I think I have a lot to offer and that's why I asked for your vote on November 8th. I'm also extremely involved in other areas. I am a member of Gateway Ensemble Church in Emily City. I teach on Wednesday nights. I volunteer. I'm a very good proponent of service learning in my classroom. I teach my students to give back to their community as well. So I always get my students involved in service learning and I think that's extremely important. That's why I want to serve and my only reason is to give back to my community. My son's a 2015 graduate of Lapeer High Schools, so the brand-new, he was the first class when they combined the schools, when everybody thought that wasn't going to go so well. And he was a product and he turned out and is great. He's got, he's on a college two, or a Division II college scholarship, playing football, and he's doing amazing. He's doing pre-med. Lapeer was awesome for him and I'm so proud of how he turned out. And I just want to in turn turn that back to this community and say thank you so much for what you did for my family and for my four children in this community. Thank you.
Okay, let's give him a hand. We're going to, we have a lot more to do tonight, but the next thing we're going to talk about here is we're going to let you open up the floor for questions to these three people. And I just want to remind you to, we're going to have pertinent questions, okay? General questions because all three of them are going to answer the same questions, okay? So ask a question. And we're also going to rotate who goes first. So the first question, we'll start with Brad and then when we have another question, we'll start with Jan and so on until your questions are answered, okay? And remember to keep them general and pertinent to the job. So anybody with questions at this time to ask any of the school board? I can't believe that.
Lisa, you referenced, but it would apply to everybody, business principles that you would bring to the Lapeer Community Schools. What would they be? How would you proceed with that?
Business principles. Well, one thing that, and I don't have the business background like Lisa does, there's no doubt about it, I don't have a business degree. But one thing that I can tell you is that we are very financially sound. In fact, in 2007, and I'm sure most of you will remember this, we passed a bond issue. And at the April 14th board meeting, we passed a resolution to refinance those bond, the bond debt, which will be a savings to you, the taxpayers, of 303 mils, which averages to be about $375,000. So as far as business, we've got to keep thinking outside the box. We've got the homeschool partnership, which brings in roughly 100 FTEs, which is $500,000, which is really helping us out. So that, as far as my business background, I don't have it like Lisa does, but I would continue to do what we are doing. And that's applying as an example. We have a new evaluation for the superintendent. It's going to take three hours at a board retreat to go over this. How are we paying for it? We got a grant from the Lapeer County ISD, Intermediate School District. So it's not coming, it's coming from you guys, but it's not coming out of our budget. And that's how we are able to stay afloat. So that's how I would handle that. Thank you.
I like Brad and unlike Lisa, I don't have a business degree, but I have a nursing degree. I've been a registered nurse for 31 years. And as far as building business principles into this position, I feel it would parallel to your own budget at home. You have, you can't spend more than you take in. And what I currently do for, in my nursing career is I'm a medical nurse case manager. And one of the tasks I'm charged with is keeping costs, medical costs low for the company paying the bill. So I have to every day cost and compare where I can get an MRI on a patient at a facility that's maybe $200 or $500 less. So I think we need to look at that as far as when we're making decisions and make sure the superintendent knows to, you know, shop for what we need for the district so we can get the high-quality best price that we can have for the students in the district. So that's my experience with budgets and bill and business principles.
I think that the focus needs to be on the customer. First of all, I like Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. I think we often, first of all, look at customer service. Our secretaries, building principals, teachers, everyone is front lines as far as the students, as far as the parents, the community, the stakeholders. So I think that's really important in order to keep enrollment high. The other things that we have to think about is products and supplies and those types of things are very minimal to a budget. Your people are your biggest thing in a school district. So when you're looking at 85 percent of your costs being in people, some of the things we could look at are, Harper Woods is doing a partnership with Wayne Community College and they're putting students on Career Pass. And they're actually, we have early college, yes, but we're asking students to go another year to get an associate's degree. They're going a step where they're giving certificates and they're, when students graduate, they are giving them certificates with their high school diploma. So they're actually able to get a decent job like in bookkeeping or in medical assistant or whatever right when they graduate. They're able to take off and get a decent job. It might not be a career job, but it's a decent job if life were to happen. I think this, the Harper Woods superintendent said he's reducing his costs by 20 percent. He's not having to have people in the district in the afternoon because he's sending the students to Wayne Community College. Great way to cut costs. So there's definite business, it's a great business model. So you need to think of ways you can utilize your resources as well as serve the community and giving students those credit.
Okay, the question, next question that I have is, this goes out for Jan, let's start with Jan. And this is, it'll be for all of you, but how do you currently assess the Lapeer Community Schools' financial situation and if you, if you're elected, what areas do you think you would like to see changes in, or how would you like to see it changed?
Will you repeat that, Bill?
Yes.
That was a lot.
How do you currently assess Lapeer Community Schools' financial situation and what might, what might you make, what areas might you make changes in?
Okay. Well, currently, we get from the state of Michigan, $7,463 per child. And we have a revenue of $61 million and we have expenditures of $60 million approximately. Overall, I feel they're doing well. We need to be fiscally conservative. That is one of the areas that a school board member is charged with is to oversee the budget and authorize and approve the budget and to hire that superintendent and make them accountable for their decisions. As far as changes, what, I've had this question a lot. We're dealing with decreasing enrollment, but I really feel strongly we need to form a very solid, strong program to reach out to Chatfield, Bishop Kelly, St. Paul's, and the homeschool community so that when those parents are done with that educational choice for their children, that there's no option for them but to come to Lapeer Community Schools. That we have the programs in place that they want and it's an excitement for them to come to our school district and not go to Davison or go to Oxford or go to those other districts. So that is, that is one of, one of the things that I've been thinking about and thought about before I decided and so that would be one of my initiatives.
I think we need to remember the, what a school board member's responsibility is and it's to monitor what the district does. We're not there to really change anything. We hire a good superintendent, we hire administrative team, or the superintendent then hires administrative team. So I think we monitor and watch everything. We're the, we're the employer technically of that superintendent. So we need to make sure he's doing his job. And that's the Machno's policy. I mean, that's what they're saying, that's what we are to do. So I think we need to make sure that we do our job in that sense. Yes, we can come up with ideas. Yes, we can support the superintendent. I think I just gave you a great example of things we could do to attract students so we can be innovative in programming and those types of things. But we need to be careful that some of these programs like the increased FTEs, you know, when homeschooling and all these, bringing these kids in are great as long as they're not costing more than what we're getting as far as FTE count. Because there's a fight with the state as far as getting those funds. Oh, sorry, FTE is the, is the amount of, so one student is a full FTE. So that would be one foundation allowance of that amount that she mentioned. And then a homeschool student, maybe if they come in for like an hour, we're given, they're given a partial amount of that. So again, we have to be careful that it's not costing us more to get them into the district, you know, for those types of programming.
We financially right now are very sound. It's not too long ago, as I'm sure Bill will remember, that we were facing an $8.6 million budget deficit. This year, because of declining enrollment, we are facing a $1.4 million budget deficit, which through some reductions here and there, we're going to be able to come in either break even or just in the black. And we're on that razor-thin budget. Now, as far as something that I'd like to see changed, and in fact, it's, it's, we'll be, I'll be going next week to a Michigan Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. And there we will be voting on one resolution put forth by the Duran School Board and last year, we put this resolution out there. And that is to change how we get funded from the state of Michigan. We have to borrow from the state of Michigan to pay our bills for the months of August and September because we get no funding from the state. Because we are on a July 1st to June 30th fish school year where the state of Michigan is on an October 1st to September 30th fish school year. So we have to borrow, and then on top of borrowing, we have to pay interest. We have to pay interest. Duran had to borrow $5 million. Can you imagine what the interest is going to be on that? That's not fair to you and it's not fair to us. So that's one thing that I'd definitely like to see changed is getting, even if they just put us on that.
Anybody else for question? Nope, over here, anybody?
I'm Chuck English. I'm not really sure how to ask a question, but we're hearing a lot of talk about the finances and that's always important. But it's about education. What is your ideas as far as what should be presented to the students as far as civics, government-type of studies, more personal things? What, what's your opinions on that and what do you see as your positions?
I'm sorry, so just to clarify, so you're talking about curriculum basically, right? So what they're offering?
Yes.
So here's the problem. Again, we're dictated by the state, right, on what we have to cover. I mean, there's standards that are set. I hate it when we are forced to teach to a test, okay? So the MEEP, the tests that are out there as far as, I'm sorry, I'm losing. I know the test that's out there, but I can't think of the current one. Right now, it's just lost me. My daughter just took it and it's gone. Anyways, the test that they give annually, unfortunately, the teachers are, have to teach to that test because funding is coming in that way. So Ohio, for example, has changed their funding mechanism where a certain amount of funding is coming according to the test. So you're getting a certain amount according to your foundation allowance and then you're getting a certain amount according to how your, your teachers are being evaluated and how your students are performing. So, you know, while my ideas may be a certain way as far as the curriculum, we're held to the standards of what the state. So really, my question or my answer back to you is, it really matters who you're putting on your state board of education and who you're putting back in your, in your state of represent, you know, your congress and your state of representatives at your state level because our hands are tied. We get Title IX money and even at the federal level, we get Title IX money, which is federal money, and you get state money and your hands are tied. You have to abide by those, you know, those laws that are in place.
Now, while we do have standards and obligations that we have to meet, everything that your children or grandchildren are learning in Lapeer Community Schools has to be approved by your local school board. Back in May, we approved a new math curriculum for the junior high. Those books that the students are now using this year were on display for a month in our boardroom that anybody from the community could come and take a look at. Now, and why, and we've only adopted math as far as Common Core is concerned. And there's a big reason. We don't, I can only speak for myself, I don't agree with the Common Core and there's a reason why we don't have it in English or science. So it does matter, like Lisa said, who you're putting on these different positions, but local, a big myth out there is that local school boards have no control when it's, when it is the exact opposite. We control every book that your children and grandchildren are learning. And I can tell you, we take it very serious, very, very serious because we don't want anything that isn't right or inappropriate for your children or grandchildren to be learning. And that is a big, big thing. Thank you for the question.
As far as academics, my history is I went to a one-room country schoolhouse from kindergarten through eighth grade, a mile up the road from my house in Emily City. And I had the same teacher for eight, not, those nine years. We were taught reading, writing, arithmetic. We were taught to sew, we were taught to cook, we were taught to put on plays, you name it. We did it at any given time. There was 14 of us there or there was 22 of us there. So I feel that we need to be strong with our reading, our writing, our arithmetic, our American history, and we need to make sure that that happens. We need to maybe require a course or part of a semester that all our kids know the Constitution. All our kids know money management so they're not going into debt when they get out of high school. I mean, there are so many other ways. Maybe it's not a full semester class or a full year, but maybe an eight-week class to teach what they're going to be, need when they get out in the world and really maybe teach a class on the cost of going to college. How are they going to pay for that? Really kind of add some more other additional curriculum on top of the basics that, that we should be teaching and not pick and choose our American history. And I also want to comment, I am against Common Core too, so.
Try to be diplomatic about this, but I don't think you guys' question answered because the question was about what we're teaching in civics, how much we're teaching how we get across to young people how our government truly works or doesn't work and what we're going to do about that in our schools. So I think that, am I wrong? Okay. So I think that's what he's trying to get to and I don't know if it was answered well. So can we try that one again?
Sure. Now, there was in the legislature this year, and in fact, thankfully, our state rep Gary Howell voted for it, a, anybody who graduates in the state of Michigan from a public school will have to take a civics test, or civics test during their senior year. I took a civics class when I was in 10th grade and then US History when I was in 11th grade. And I felt they were taught very well. Thankfully, I had a great teacher that really drilled home, you know, learning the presidents, learning the different amendments, learning why the different amendments came up, like the 13th, 14th, and 15th amendments to free the slaves, give them the right to vote and protection under the law. So I think it's very important that, that our students are learning that. And I'm very thankful that our legislature is seeing that as well and putting in these guidelines and these fail safes to, you know, make sure that our students know. In fact, I was reading a recent study and only 20 percent of students that graduate will be able to, nationally I'm speaking, will be able to pass a civics test. That's appalling because I took it, I, my teacher made us take a mock, you know, the citizens test. Thankfully, I think there's 100 questions, I'm not exactly for sure on that, but out of the 100, I got nine, 90 percent of them correct. And that's something I take great pride in. Obviously, I want it to be 100 percent, but it's very key that we are learning why we have the different amendments and why we- and why we are where we're at today as a country.
I guess, like I said in my previous answer, we need to teach the Constitution and the background of it, the meaning of it. We need to teach American history and not pick and choose what we're going to teach our kids in American history. And that is done at the local school board level. That curriculum is approved by our local school board. And yeah, there are some standards and testing that has come from the state, but I think we need to revise that, because I don't think the children of Lapeer Community Schools or Lapeer County are the same as the ones in the UP, in the Upper Peninsula. I mean, they have different experiences. They have a different culture. They have a different background. So I think we need to keep things local within our school... Community schools. Even traveling this county, Lakeville School District is much different than Elmont. You've got two districts, and we live in the largest district in the county, or Lapeer Schools is the largest district in the county. And they all bring a uniqueness to the situation, that the school board members have to decide on what curriculum to offer and approve for the students. But there's basics. Again, the Constitution and money management, and the list goes on. Basic reading, writing, and arithmetic again.
I would agree that the basics need to be taught, that you need to teach the Constitution as long as it's within the parameters of the curriculum that needs to be set, because our students need to unfortunately pass the tests that are required by the state. Our district has to stay within those standards, and we need to meet those standards. It's very important. Again, it's set by the legislature. So if we could get our legislature on board, that would be great. So I'm totally a fan of it. I think what we need to remember is classes being offered and just all of a sudden putting classes in, we have to be careful with that, because the more... There is a curriculum out there. There's a set number of credits. It's only gone up since I went to high school. So, you know, I had to graduate with 20 credits, and only these things, you know, to be college-ready or to be these things. The credits involvement, you can ask your students today, it's only gone up, where they have to have these many science and these many math and this. And when we're looking at giving students college credit, okay, and we're just trying to get them on Career Pass, that limits their choices. So if you're adding classes that you're going to require out of them, you know, that you want as extra... And I'm not saying civics is extra by any means. But I'm saying if you're adding another class, you know what I mean, to their curriculum, and you want them to go on to college or get college credit, we need to be careful about adding those classes, because we also like the idea of stu... I mean, parents, let's be fiscally responsible. We like the idea of this dual enrollment, of this getting college credit. So that's going to save money for our budgets in the future. As a parent, I'm going to say, I like my student graduating and getting some college degree. So... And I would hope we teach that at the college level as well, the Constitution.
Okay. This next question is for Brad, I guess. As a parent, I've been involved. I have two kids. One, a successful high school graduate, who's now graduated from college in the work world. A daughter who's in her third year at Alma College, graduated AP, saved multiple thousand dollars. I've been involved with the district from the planning of the two middle schools or junior highs, right from... In part of the bond campaign. Got a long history with the district. Been involved with many aspects of it. But one thing that I've been reading recently, lately, that is very troubling to me, and I think maybe a lot of other folks, is I understand there's current negotiations that are going on between the, you know, the teachers, the administration, and there seems to be... There's a lot of name-calling involved. And I understand it's politics, and everyone's going to do their thing. But what troubles me is that I've been reading that kids have been... You know, some kids have walked out of classes, or their kids have been getting involved in this. And I will ask you, and I understand, you know, you may be limited as to what you can say, but just as a parent, to me, I don't send my... I never sent my kids to school to get involved in, you know, financial disputes between folks at the schools. So can I... Can you folks let me know, just personally, your thoughts on what's going on?
Well, as far as the contract goes, I'm pretty limited on what I can say, because if I do say anything, a unfair labor practice can be filed against the school district. So I'm very limited on what I can say as far as that's concerned. But I can tell you, on a district standpoint, we will continue to bargain in good faith. It's really disappointing, and this is... There's a... And I'm sure former board president Bob Denny will tell you, there's a bylaw in there. I forget exactly what it is, but when a current board member speaks, he speaks solely about his own beliefs. So this is not to be construed with anybody else's beliefs or anything like that. I feel it's very disappointing that it is out in the public and that it is involving the kids. I understand they want to stick up for their teachers who they believe, and again, misinformation. There's a misconception out there that these teachers are working under no contract, when in fact, they are working under last year's contract. So they're not working without a contract. They're working under last year's contract. No new contract. So that is unfortunate. And that's my feelings on it. And again, I would love to see this resolved more than anybody. And it will be. And we will continue... Both sides will continue to bargain in good faith.
So your question is, would I support my children demonstrating at school? I agree.
Well, as a parent, no, I would not support that or encourage that. I would sit down with my children at home if they started coming home with questions, like I did through their whole academic career, and talk about it, and do what I could to educate them on the situation, and not encourage them to get involved in that kind of adult contract negotiation. And one, I would want to know if they left the classroom without permission, because then you're dealing with another issue. So, you know, it's a sensitive situation in our community right now. And I, as just a member of the district and a candidate, I don't have any more information than any of you do sitting here. And all I can hope is and pray for both sides that they come to an agreement that is met to make... The academics are kept in mind for the students, the families, and the educational community, and that we keep Lapeer Community Schools the best that it is. But from a personal standpoint, having children and gone through this, when they come home with questions, I'd sit down and do what I could, reach out to people that, but I wouldn't support them just leaving their classroom unapproved. And then we got another layer to deal with. So that's my opinion.
My first thoughts are, no, the students should definitely not be involved. I think this is another case of where business principles come into involve. Anytime there's ever a negotiation like this, I mean, a strike, a walkout, that doesn't work. It doesn't work for the company. It doesn't work for the labor, right? The laborers. So this is where, again, educators need to get involved in the business side of things, and they need to understand those concepts. And I think that sometimes just the education of that and getting to understand that concept can be really helpful. But as I've seen in K-12, unfortunately, and in higher ed, they don't always understand those principles, and sometimes they need to learn them. So definitely, the students shouldn't be involved. It's not good for the community. It's not good for the students. And I don't know if they're learning the best lesson in this as well. And I think that it needs to be approached definitely differently.
Jan?
I'd like to respond to the question the last gentleman mentioned. Lapeer Community Schools, your board is currently at impasse with the teachers' union. My sister-in-law is a 25-year teacher on this board. And to address the effect about kids walking out of class and walking out in general, well, I think, yeah, it was the UAW that walked out on General Motors in 1937 that gave this whole area the standard of living that it's gained in the last 50 years, 60 years, 70 years. And to teach kids that you don't have the right to object to something? To just stand there like little puppets in a line? Please, grow up, will you?
First of all, I support the First Amendment, freedom of speech. And I would support students organizing in a very organized way. If they want to stand... They want to organize somewhere and voice their opinions. However, they are... We have to consider some may be minors, and their parents need to know what they're doing as a minor. But I'm one for freedom of speech, definitely. But I think we need to maybe teach them how to organize and state their views in a non-destructive manner. So that's... I don't know the situation. I wasn't there. I don't know. I don't know. I think, like I mentioned, we got to see, did they just leave their classroom without asking for permission? I mean, there are rules within the school. There's a student handbook. And if the students and the parents have signed off on that handbook, which I did for several years, I think we need to look at, did they violate that? Did they violate their signature and their parent in that student handbook on the decision that they made? I really... I'm for, you know, people letting us know how they feel if they want to organize and protest. But we need to do it in a safe environment, and we do need to do it the proper way. So that's... I just... I honestly don't support students just running out of their classroom outside the school during school hours and being disruptive. I mean, if they want to stay there... Well, again, we need to know, did they have permission? Did they have permission to leave their classroom?
Again, my first thought is, I would say, you know, is there a better way? Could they have signed a petition, something like that? Could they have done it differently? I think it disrupts the educational process, and I'm all about doing things... You know, I teach in college, and I wouldn't honestly, and I'm part of a labor union, I would not want them walking out of my class to support me. I really wouldn't. I would think that's inappropriate. So I have to stand on my beliefs as well, and my beliefs are, I wouldn't want them to do it that way. Okay? So signing a petition, voicing their concern, that's okay. But again, in a different manner. Okay? So that's, you know, that's part of the idea that I think... And I would look at, you know, I think part of the thing is good-faith bargaining. You know, it needs to be addressed between the teachers and administration, for sure. But I haven't heard the impasse. I've heard they've been meeting weekly. And it's said in the paper, so... That's what we hear. We don't know.
I got to agree with both Lisa and Jan. I agree that you do have a First Amendment right. And you do... And it is a disruption. And furthermore, if they leave class without permission, that's an unexcused absence. So you got to play by the rules. And furthermore, to answer your question about 1930... Not your question, but your statement about 1937, next time you go over to the memorial, check out, there's a brick that's got my great-grandfather's name on it. His name's Samuel Ingram. So I know, I've got direct ties. And furthermore, there's only four people that know whether they're at an impasse or not. That's the two bargainers for the school district and the two bargainers for the LEA, which is the Lapeer Education Association, which is the teachers' union. Those are the only four people that know what goes on in that room, because negotiations are meant to be in a room, not to be leaked out. So it is unfortunate, like I said earlier, that it's playing in the public eye. And no, I do not think it's great that our students just left class. And it happened at a 8-, 9-grade school building, which is full of minors, like Jan said.
Okay. You asked that question afterwards, okay? We need to continue. Okay. Next question. Anybody over here? Anybody? Okay. Hold on.
I'm wondering what you think the schools are doing well? And what you think the schools need to improve on? I hear a lot of talk about stakeholders and negotiations and all that stuff, but I want to know... I mean, from my experience, my kids have been afforded an amazing opportunity the last few years. My kids, thankfully, have always been advanced. And in their beginning, they were stuck in their classroom, and they were taught this because they were in 4th grade, and that's what they were taught. And now, the district has actually opened it up. My 7th grader is taking algebra at the 8-, 9th middle school. He's taking advanced science and math at CFI. He goes from Roland Warner to Zimmer to CFI, back to Roland Warner, so that he can get the education that he needs. I don't want to see that go away. So what do you think they are doing well over the last few years? And what do you think needs to improve on?
I would totally agree on the programming issues, that they're doing a really good job on the offering innovative ideas for students to get college credit, AP classes, different types of exposure to things. My daughter, we moved from a really small district. So when we first came here, it was tough. I mean, she was 5th grade, and I thought, oh, she'll be the hard one, or she'll be the easy one. And my son came as a 10th grader. And I thought, oh, boy, I'm looking for trouble with him. He was easy, she was tough, okay? And it was completely opposite. One thing she sees now is, wow. She looks at her friends back at the old school, they don't have the opportunity. She's in springboard 9, English, you know? She's in all these different things, and she has all these things that she can do, and her friends back in her homeschool can't do this. And I say, see the opportunities you have available? See what you wouldn't have? So, you know, so many opportunities, so many things that they... You know, CFI, I know people thought it was going to get closed, but look what, you know, it's opened up all these opportunities for students with, you know, dual enrollment and early college and AP classes and just all the things that they have to offer. The one football team, and look at what's... Bring the community together. You know, there's just awesome things that Lapeer is doing. I think it's hard to say what you want to get fixed, because we're not sitting on that school board. You know, I've watched some, like Lynch, you know, gave a presentation about, you know, bullying can also always be a problem. I think that starts at home. You know, I think we're all sometimes at a problem for bullying. So I think we got to start at home.
To piggyback, I think opportunities. I believe, I'm in a group on Facebook that you're in as well, and I know you're a big supporter of our bands. And I thank you for that. And one thing that I will say is, we are the district of choices, and we're also the district of unique opportunities and unique experiences. Who would have thought, just a year ago, that our band was going to be playing down at the big house? Who would have thought? I wouldn't have. I would have never guessed it. But that's what we're doing right. We're giving every single student the opportunity to be involved. And, you know, I was involved in Quiz Bowl, football, and track. Not exactly the three things that go together. But you can be involved and be who you want to be. That's the beauty of Lapeer Community Schools. And one thing that I would like to see fixed a little bit, and again, it's a decades-old thing, is I'd like to make sure that our class sizes stay reasonable. You don't always learn the greatest when you've got, you know, 35 kids in a class. If you can keep it 30 and under, that would be great. And that's one thing, again, working with the state, you know, get more funding so we can get more teachers. That's how you fix that problem, but that's one thing that I would definitely, definitely like to see improved upon. Thank you for the question.
Well, during my children's tenure in LaPierre Community Schools, there was two high schools, LaPierre East and LaPierre West. And as bond issues came up, they wouldn't get passed, because it was a divided community. And I had my apprehensions about it, because you think, well, less people, less kids can be in band, they can be in sports, they can be in this. But I've got to give kudos to the school district for combining the schools. I think it's brought this community together. I don't think it's been as divided as it has been in the past, for a lot of reasons, not just passing bond issues, but having, you know, unfortunately, the football team did really well. I think that helped bring everyone together. The dual enrollment program is awesome. I went to in August, after I announced my candidacy, beginning of school, and a 10th grader can take a college class now, and take that credit with them, which is a cost savings at the college level. When my son was in high school, he chose to do it through the intermediate school district, and he has no regrets about it. He had to drive out there, though, not stay in the district, to do that. And then the robotics. It's not a program in the school, but if you ever have a chance to go watch the children or the students that are in robotics, they love it. They're a passion. One of the young men that helped was in robotics, got a scholarship to Kettering. So there's a lot of great things going on. The school board just passed Lynch Elementary to be a STEM school, science, technology, engineering, and math school. So that'll be exciting to see what happens out of that. So there's lots of good things. I would personally like to see, when a child takes an AP Advanced Placement test, that we increase those rates of students taking that test. Do what we can so that we have a higher passage. Thank you.
Stuff going on. Good stuff.
Okay, we're going to ask two more questions. Anybody back here got one? Okay?
Yeah. One thing, and this has been, and unfortunately, it's a very controversial subject, but there have been things, our state, the State Board of Education passed the transgender bathroom guidelines, and I just would like to know your individual, again, we understand this is all individual, and this is just, you know, but individually, and I understand, the guidelines doesn't mean that we're automatically going to have it, but, you know, just there's a lot of folks, it's a very, as a parent of, when my daughter was in fifth grade, you know, I think of, I always think of the kids when they're younger as opposed to when they're older. And so for me, I would just be, to me, would be kind of a very troubling thing. But can I get your thoughts on, you know, on the, on that issue that was passed by the state board?
Yes, and thank you for the question, Bill. I am 100% against the transgender bathrooms, but at the same time, we have dealt with this issue already as a district. We had a case a couple of years ago that none of you knew about, because we took care of it internally. And we made accommodations for this one student so that they were able to be, stay comfortable along with the rest of the population. It wasn't a cost to anybody. It was just making reasonable accommodations for them. So while, yes, I am against them, I know that we can and we will, as a district, make sure that every single child is taken care of, because that's our job, from the top all the way to the bottom. And that, and that's a big thing, because while the majority may be against it, well, there's still a minority that we have to take care of, and we have to make sure that they're comfortable and in a safe learning environment. So that would be my answer. Yes, I'm against it, but I also want to make sure all of our students are taken care of, and we will continue to do that as we have in the past. Thank you for the question again.
I, like Brad, would be against that currently. It's a guideline from the Michigan State Board of Education, and my concern is that it would be misconstrued as a mandate. So if it came to a vote before our school board, and I am honored to be on your school board, I would vote no against that, and also don't support any discrimination of any student. So I think each case may be handled by case, by case basis.
I'm going to agree that I am not for the policy of the transgender students neutrality bathroom. Again, it's a recommendation. It's not a mandate at this point. I think this goes back to who you put into your state board of education. Again, I think that we tend to not pay attention to who we vote for sometimes in those, in those positions, unfortunately. I think that what we have to remember is we do not want to get involved. We take Title IX money in, okay? We do not want to get involved in a civil rights issue, so we have to take it on a case-by-case issue, just like Brad said. If you're handling it by a case-by-case basis, it takes it down a level, and make sure that you're not, you know, putting yourself at risk for a lawsuit. The district would definitely not want to get into that situation, so.
Okay, anybody else? Oh, we've got a couple now. Okay, unfortunately, folks, only got time for one right now, and they'll be around here, so ask the question.
Well, thanks. I've heard comments about wanting to raise more money to get more whatever, and that concerns me, because I'm not getting any more money from my people that hire me, so I don't like the idea of getting more money, because that means they're going to take it from me. So I'd like to hear your viewpoint on, I mean, it's the easy way out, just get more money and do more, but that necessarily, doesn't necessarily translate into better education for the students. All you've got to do is look to Detroit and see that.
So what is your question, Harry?
How do you feel about adding more to my tax rolls for the schools? Do you want to increase the amount of money coming that they're going to take from my taxes?
No, I'm a fiscal conservative, so I feel that we need to look at what we have, that we come into the district and be financially responsible for that. I would, if there's grants available at no cost to the taxpayer in the county, or no cost to the residents of the county, and it can help the educational experience, I would support that, depending on where the grant money came from.
I'm definitely not a fan of increased taxes. I think we have to be careful of looking at maintaining our buildings, though. The problem is, is our current funding situation does not allow for roofs and boilers and those types of things to be replaced, so capital projects is not currently being funded. And with buildings getting older and those types of things, we need to maintain the district that we have in place. So I'm not a fan of increasing, but if we're already maybe in a situation of having a certain bond issue in place, if we could maybe lower it and maintain that in order to improve our buildings, that might be a possibility, only because your real estate value has a play in how your school district is. So if you have a viable school district, you're going to make money, more money in the long run if your, if your real estate property has more value. So people automatically, they come into a district and they want to know, or they come in to buy your property, they want to know, do you have a good school district? And that's really important, and if we let our buildings fail, we're not going to have a good, a good school district. So I think we have to find a medium where we're maintaining our buildings somehow, and I think that's a future problem with LaPierre. I see the problem that, you know, yes, Roland Warner, Zimmer, great buildings. I'm wondering about what's happening with these elementary schools and east. I'm wondering that, how we're going to maintain those in the future? And I'm not looking at this in the next couple of years, I'm just thinking in the future, how are we going to maintain it based on the current funding situation? So, again, not looking at new taxes, but if there's a situation where we could lower and maybe maintain what's currently there, if that's an option for funding, I would be, I guess, interested in that.
Thank you for the question, Harry. And the answer to that is no, I'm not a fan of more taxes. And like I alluded to earlier, we are taking that serious, and that's why we have refinanced our bond debt issue and have lowered the taxes of LaPierre schools' residents, so that it is a savings deal. And I know I've mentioned earlier that, you know, getting grants from here and there. If we were just put on the same fiscal calendar as a state, we wouldn't need any of that, because then we would be able to, you know, have our own self-efficiency, because we wouldn't have to borrow, and we wouldn't have to pay on that borrowing, the interest. So no, I'm not a fan of that, and again, how do you stay afloat without getting grants from the ISD in today's world? It's pretty hard. So as much as I wouldn't like to, you've got to, because it's all, at the end of the day, it's all about the students. Thank you.
Okay, let's give my hand, please, for that. Good job. Great job. And great questions. Thank you very much for all the questions that you're asking. I'm sure you have more, and if you don't right now, you probably will. They will be hanging around for a while to answer those questions for you, so don't be afraid to ask them, any of them, okay? Normally, at this time, if we have our representatives here, we have them give an update of what's going on in Lansing. Both of them are tied up tonight, but we are fortunate, because we have Mr. Paul Mitchell that's going to talk to us for a few minutes.
I'm not going to do a campaign speech. My God, if you've all haven't heard from me before, I failed badly. So what I had the chance to talk about is, yesterday I had a chance to speak at Donald Trump rally. About 6,000 people showed up, and there were several thousand standing outside. It was really quite amazing. Here's information I think is useful for you. The report that came out a couple of days ago that the Clinton campaign was leading by nine points, there's private polling that says it's dead even in the state, and to give you an indication of how even it is, Hillary's coming back on Friday to Michigan, coming to Detroit, scrambling this to kind of bolster her numbers in Michigan, and bolster her number in urban communities, because she's in fact on the edge of losing Michigan. If you lose, if you're a Democrat and you lose Michigan, what else do you lose, folks? Ohio, Ohio's at risk, right? West Virginia's very much at risk. Florida already has a question mark. She's leading Iowa, or he's leading Iowa. The reality is, despite the national polls that were telling you that at some points in time Hillary was up by 12, the most recent one says that Trump's up by one, and I've seen polling that has him up in one to three points. It's, that's not accurate. The polling that she's up by 12 has never been accurate. I don't know what medication they're on, but it's good stuff. We did our own polling for the 10th congressional district. Donald Trump leads by 20 points out here. He leads by about, he leads by about 13 points in Macomb County, and that's all of Macomb, even southern Macomb. Even southern Macomb, which is, you know, south of Macomb, south end of Macomb, which is a significant item. Well, my dad retired from GM off the line, and I guarantee you, he voted for Donald Trump in the primary, and he'll vote for Donald Trump in the general election. That's what's transitioning in Michigan, it's transitioning in Ohio. Pennsylvania will be a toss-up, because the east side of the state is very much Democratic, but the west side and the working side of the state is very much Republican. So that's, that's a toss-up. The reason I'm going through all this is, we have time over the next several days to make a difference. We can run up numbers in this district and other areas of the state that will bolster numbers in the state. Donald Trump can win the state. The Republican ticket can win the state. It's important all the way up and down the ticket. Yeah, I sit number two in the ticket, and it'd be very nice to, guys, work your way down. Paul Mitchell, think of hair care, whatever you want, but, you know, it'd be helpful. I'll take whatever. Gary Howell is also on that. He's a fine state rep. Work your way down, you find quality people there that are good conservatives that are making a difference or can make a difference in terms of the direction of this country. So do not let the next several days, all the doom and gloom, and, you know, the Democrats are going to win, and they're going to run, they're going to run us into the ditch on policy. It truly is a toss-up, and like a lot of other elections, you know, I think people turn their TVs off. I think the only thing that's going to win this election now is people talking to people and telling them, hey, this is why I'm voting for this group of people. So do that work over the next few days, as many people as you can, family, dinners, violate that whole thing about not talking about politics at dinner. Take your chances, I mean, God knows. I did that in my household, with my extended family, and I have a brother that was very unhappy with him a long time, because he's a big Ted Cruz supporter, and I was Cardiff arena, and that, you know, that didn't go well for a while, but we made up. But do that, and it will make a huge difference on November 8th, and we will have at least something to look forward to. It is not going to be a wipeout. It's going to be neck and neck. We'll be up late, and that would be a good reason if we were up late, frankly. So that's my update, there's nothing more important than that. Thanks very much for your time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just real quick, I did want to let you folks know that because of the circumstances, and it's been kind of crazy with everything that's going on, if you, you have a friend or family member, Michigan is one of the very few states, we have a large portion that have voted absentee. Now, if for some reason you have a family, friend, or relative that finds that they don't, they are regretting how they voted, they can go back to their original polling station, and they can revote. What they have to do is they have to go to the township where they got their ballot and ask the clerk to spoil their ballot. It's the same thing that's done when, if a ballot gets lost in the mail. But they will then spoil that ballot, and then the person can revote. So with everything, all the news things that have come out, if you do know somebody that has, for whatever reason, if they want to change their vote, Michigan, there's only maybe five or six states that allow that, Michigan is one of them, and you just might want to let somebody know. They do, okay. I, I, and also, the polling place is, the polling places by state mandate, they're, all your precincts or your township offices have to be open until 2:00 this Saturday, because it's the last Saturday before the general election. So they have to have time, if they're going to change a vote, they have to have time, the clerks have to have time to pull it out, you know, to get ahold of that ballot and retrieve it. Thanks.
Thank you. That's good information, and please keep that in mind. Also, I believe Mr. Mitchell may have a few more signs available outside, and he's not selling them, he's giving them away.
I had someone call, and we did 3,000 little signs. Literally, we're down to like 10 or 15. We did, how many big signs, Don? 500? Five or 600 big signs? Can't remember. And they're all gone, so we are now, we're going to sell them, they're collecting them. Literally, you'll get the last of the lot, and I realized the other day, I'm also down to like 10 business cards, you know? It's getting to the end of the campaign when you no longer have anything.
That's right, that's right. Right. And if you're looking for business cards, I'm also running, so you can have some of mine anytime you want. Listen, okay, yeah, thanks. Before we, you see you all have copies of what you're seeing up here on the board right now. And let me explain a little bit what's going on here, or why we did this. As you know, in the past few years, election years, we usually do a voter's guide from the Tea Party for you, okay? With our recommendations based on questionnaires sent out to the local candidates, received back, and evaluated. This time, however, we made it a point to have several forums that included all these candidates. Most of you are regulars here, and you all know that we have these candidates up here, and you have a chance to talk to them and listen to them and ask them questions. So because of that, we have a chance to not only listen to them, and our candidates have to say, but we also ask them our own questions, and then form our own opinions on who we want to vote for. So hopefully, by now, folks, when you go to the voter's ballot thing, you know who you're going to vote for, and you know why, and you've had a chance to see them and listen to them. They're all some great people, and they all had a lot to say. We hope this helps you in your decision on your candidate. However, we did not give you a chance to speak or to meet any of the candidates running for these seats that I'm showing you here, okay? So what we'd like to do is show you the folks running for these positions and ask you to consider these candidates for those positions when you go to vote. As you can see, as a matter of fact, in the last, last term, we had Dave Viviano at a couple of our forums, Joan Larson, and of course, Donald Trump, you see him every day. And it ought to be easy to make up your mind whether you're going to vote for him or not. Tea Party isn't saying one way or another, and I'm not telling you how to vote, but we think he's a great guy. And of course, Mike Prince. The ones on the side here are the ones you don't know too much about, okay? But we wanted to put our recommendations up there. And those are the State Board of Education people, NSU trustees, and Western State University, that's Western, right? Wayne State, sorry, yeah. And the University of Michigan Regents. Those are people that are also on the board. So keep your mind, or keep your ideas on those, and maybe you want to take that card with you in case you forget who they are. Okay. Now, the announcements. The Tea Party Business Meeting for November 17th, or will be on November 17th, because the 24th is Thanksgiving. And so we're having that a week early. There will be no general meeting in December due to the Christmas holidays this year. However, we ain't done, folks. We ain't done by a long shot. And starting back in January, we'll be starting back up again and have dynamic speakers and forums and all these things you become used to here with the Tea Party, you're going to see again next year. There may not be an election going on, but we still got problems, and I think you all know that. So we'll have a business meeting in December on the 15th at the LaPierre Sportsman's Club. The next general meeting will be January 3rd, so mark that down, 2017. And it'll be right here at Mayfield Township Hall at 7:00. Any questions on that? Okay, Carol, I'd like to have you all join me in the closing part, please. Okay, Carol, I'd like to have you all join me in the closing prayer, please.
Okay, Lord, thank you for the freedom we have to hold meetings like this. We are leaving this place with more knowledge than before we came. Guide everyone home safely. Let everyone go to the voting booth with confidence and assurance as they dutifully exercise their right to vote on November eighth. In Jesus' name, amen.